Representative from the news media, if they come in, I will recognize those. And also our city council lady that is here, Ms. Sheribor, we're glad that you're here. And all the rest of you. So if you will, silence your phones. If it does ring, if you go out in the corridor and ask Rick. Come back in, it's not a problem. Having said that, we're going to ask Commissioner Timmy Rushing if he'll give the invocation, lead us in the pleasurable ways.
Bow with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord God, thank you for this day. Thank you for all your many blessings. Lord, we've had several passings in the past few days and several bad wrecks. Just please be with the families that's involved in that. Just please be with all the law enforcement, first responders, military, all the ones that fight every day to keep us safe and free. Lord, please be with this commission as we try to lead this county and help us to lead it the best way possible. Just please be with us in our decisions. These things I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Rushing. And now we will have the roll call by Ms. Missy White.
I, Venus Missy White, present as clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County. You're about to call the roll for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman Roy Thompson.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Kurt Deal.
Aye.
Commissioner Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Jappy Stringer.
Aye.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
Aye.
And Commissioner Toby Connor.
Aye.
I've determined that we have all members of the Board of Commissioners present. Therefore, we have a forum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I now give the floor back to the chairman.
Thank you, Ms. White. We will now, I need a motion to, I'm sure all of you have read and studied the zoning agenda, and I now ask for a motion for approval.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Sup. Motion, we have a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Mr. Pope, if you would lead us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Agenda Item Number One tonight is an appeal, application from Quality Home Development LLC with Rocky Sellers as the agent, who has applied for a variance to reduce a 40-foot front yard setback to a 30-foot setback. Property is located at 1421 Jordan Drive, Slot 101, in Meadow Lake subdivision. And you may recall, I guess, in our, what would now be July meeting, back in July, the board heard this case and really put it off until August so that what would have been the August meeting, so that the owner and nearby property owners had a chance to kind of look through some different scenarios of what would be, you know, rather than tearing down the garage that was over the front yard setback. And so with the hurricane, that kind of delayed things, but we were able to meet as Rocky Sellers and then the homeowners, the area homeowners, and then the county sat in, you know, to, I guess, listen in to what would maybe be proposed for a solution between the two parties. We met August 16th, and I can report that there is a compromise that's proposed, but they're still trying to work through some items just to make sure it's feasible before, really trying to determine if wetlands are truly present, which would require a delineation, or if we would accept the delineation that's been done, not to get too far into the details. But I think Mr. Sellers, if he, you know, maybe technically if he has to ask for a continuation himself, but I think it may be justified if the board so chose to give them additional time to go through that feasibility of their proposed solution. And I know some representatives from the neighborhood are here as well. You know, so with that, I would just recommend that we give another month, basically, to the next evening meeting to decide on this case. You know, Mr. Sellers, if you're present, Jeff, I don't know, does he have to ask as an applicant?
Well, it has to be with his consent, so.
Okay.
I guess he just needs to confirm that he consents to that.
Okay, you've heard the request. We won't, we have some that signed up to speak, but if we're going to table it, we're not going to allow them to speak tonight, right?
That's right, if you choose to table or defer it, yeah.
Right, and I think this may be Mr. and Ms. Darcy who has signed up, and they're in, or at least Ms. Darcy's in the audience, too, for good measure if you want to ask her. But I think everybody in communication today was in agreement with if y'all would give them another, you know, to the next board meeting, next evening board meeting. Should be enough time.
If everybody's in agreement, Commissioners, you've heard the request, I will ask for a motion.
Move to table it till next meeting.
Thank you.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much.
Agenda Item Number Two tonight is a rezon request by Chance Ricchio, who has submitted an application to rezone approximately 5.85 acres from an Ag-5 zoning to a highway commercial zone, which would be for the purpose of operating an automotive repair business. And the property is located at 24333 U.S. Highway 80 West, which is between Hope You Like It and Portal on Highway 80, just on the south side of Highway 80. Staff suggest some conditions that if the rezon request is approved, that you approve with those conditions. And then Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with the conditions by four to zero vote. And so if you turn your attention to the map, this is the general location, again, between Hope You Like It and Portal. The area that is for the request is the area shown in the parcel in blue there. The building is in place. It was built as an accessory building permitted through the development office. And then I think what started maybe more of as a hobby, just kind of expanded. So that's where the development office pushed the applicant to come make sure that everything was looked at in a proper way according to the zoning ordinance. But Ag-5 property is surrounding this. It's, it is on an arterial road being Highway 80, so it does qualify for a highway commercial zoning, but again, this is the aerial of the property. As you can see, currently, the vehicles that are being, are waiting for repair or being repaired are, you know, stored on the yard, and access is through one driveway onto the This is the building, and I'll go through a few photos of the property so you get acquainted with it. This is the driveway, again, Highway 80, or onto Highway 80. And then there's some, which I think county engineer felt okay about the proximity to that, to the road across Highway 80, as far as where it turns out onto Highway 80. But, you know, if it were approved, there's some zoning standards that would have to be kind of looked at closely to bring it up to the standard, as well as a conditional use that you will see following this, just kind of got missed in the application phase, that you would need a conditional use. So as far as a rezoning into a commercial property, that's really what you're looking at tonight. Do you think it warrants that commercial use? And so some of the conditions that were suggested, really until looking at the property in depth with a surveyor that would capture any, or all the sides of the buildings as they sit currently, where parking is, where parking flows would be, traffic flows would be, and just kind of setting the baseline for any future expansion would have to come back and get additional zoning approval. So this would kind of, the conditions would kind of lock in what's currently there. Okay, so, but with that, again, staff recommends conditions if the approval is granted. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Ricchio as the applicant.
He kind of covered it, I guess. We're just trying to keep going, really, like we were, and whatever we got to do to keep doing it. But I think he covered all of it for the most part.
We have any questions?
You don't have any problem with the conditions, do you?
Oh, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Ask call for questions? And I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this rezoning with the conditions.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Yes, sir. Thank you.
And again, Commissioners, you'll see a conditional use come back to you, or come to you in the next month or so. Just, again, that type of use requires the closer look at, you know, how that land use is being performed. But, all right, so let me get set up here. Agenda Item Three is a rezon request by Mr. Edwin Smith, who has applied to rezon the property from Ag-5 to a general commercial for the operation of a grocery store. The property is located at 4721 Highway 67. And staff recommends approval of the rezon request with conditions, and Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval with the conditions by four to zero vote. This lot, or this parcel is, I think, a total of 3.5 acres, but applicant is really just looking to rezon two acres of that parcel. The general location of this is Highway 67, south of I-16. It is located, again, on an arterial route, which goes along with highway commercial, or general commercial zoning. And this is the, this is the property, and you can see this, you may or may not be able to see, but there's, the store is currently, okay, so this is the structure that's currently there. It's been operating as a produce stand or produce market, and as we hope, you know, as we all hope to see businesses grow, the owner began, you know, selling a little more of the packaged foods and things that kind of pushed it into the definition of a grocery store. And so that's really why we're here, is just so that the type of foods that they're selling and the different inspections that would be required by the county or the state with a grocery store is really what he was getting into and needing to meet. So the conditions speak to, again, basically locking in this footprint of the, of the structure to where, or I think maybe there's room for expansion, but up to a certain amount. And so, you know, if it grows by a little bit, it's not going to have a tremendous impact on the area, more so than what it is now. So with that, it's addressed in conditions, and the entry-exit points on Highway 67 would just kind of be pertaining, or contained to what the property owner currently uses or currently has access to. And if I can go back, this is the site plan, it's shown. There's some parking and things that, handicap parking, you know, different things by the building code that the owner would have to work through with the building department. But I think we've gone over that fairly extensively with the owner, and he, you know, seems in agreement. So, but again, it was a permitted structure, everything was permitted the way it should be. It's just, you know, certain produce items or packaged food items just pushed it over to a new zoning. But again, with that, staff recommends approval with the conditions. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Good afternoon, how y'all doing? I run a simple, little 20 by 20, but started out as a produce market, and it's a farm market. Ninety percent of the products I sell are local, either comes out of Bullock, Bryan, Effingham, Tappanoua, Jenkins County. People like to know where their food comes from. People can come in my shop, and I can point, and I can tell them where it comes from. People like that. We offer a laid-back, friendly atmosphere. We're community-oriented. People in the community give input, they come, if they just want to shuck and jive for a little while, they just talk. There's no pressure, they like it. Facebook seems to be a big thing nowadays. I have over 1,600 followers on Facebook. And we're trying to add products that the community are asking for. We didn't realize when we added a few of these that it would be a problem. So we're here trying to correct that. Grocery store was the best thing under the item list that fit the need, but it's more like an old-time general store. It's for folks to come in and they can talk to you. It's for folks to come in and you can tell them, this come out of Bryan County. This was drove by so-and-so. And so that's where we're at, and we just, we didn't realize that we had to have this rezon to do this. And so I just asked that y'all would permit us to do this for the community. Thank you.
Questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Move to approve.
Second.
Again, hearing none, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Agenda Item Four is a conditional use request by Eddie Crawford, who has applied for the conditional use of allowing a daycare at his residence. The property is located at 418 Charleston Avenue, and Ms. Corinne Cotton will serve as agent. Staff recommends that we have a few conditions if approval is granted, and then Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by four to zero vote. Location of this parcel is just south of Statesboro. It is, it is in an Ag-5 neighborhood, so, you know, there is a kind of residential setting, but, you know, access to the property and everything is adequate. And again, the general location is off Old Register Way into this neighborhood, but this is the, this is the home here, residential property surrounding, but the zoning for that development is, or remains, Ag-5. But operation will be within the home. This is the surrounding properties, and then this is the structure where the daycare would be. And so with that, really, I'll just say that the conditions that were suggested, I think just go along with what's kind of, along the same lines of what's allowed by the state in home daycares, and what we have in commercial and residential zones for daycares is just because it's Ag-5 zoning, we borrowed some of those standards, really, for the conditions. But again, I'll turn it over to Ms. Cotton, Mr. and Ms. Cotton, okay, is that you? All right. And I think the concept of this in-home daycare is pretty neat, as far as the, what they serve, or the need that they serve in the different hours of operation and things like that, but I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Hi. My goal is to be, get my license through the state if I'm approved. So much of their standards is what some of your requirements, which is like the fence in the backyard was the main thing, and I believe it was the garbage pickup contract. So, yeah, that's the goal.
What age, from what age to what age do you intend on keeping?
Um, it was basically between maybe newborn and like teenage, maybe 16, 17. And I wouldn't, with the state, when I require my license in the home, I can only keep up to six kids, but I would not have like all six of those kids at one time, because, you know, people work, I'm not going to do overnight, but maybe like night shift up to maybe like 12 o'clock, and maybe those go into work in the morning between like 5:00 in the morning to maybe, so 5:00 in the morning to maybe like 12, 12:30 at night.
Yes, ma'am. Reason I ask that, we have some people that apply to keep people, and it turns out to be a lot older than.
Oh, no.
So I just wanted to clarify that for the Commissioners.
Any more questions? Hearing none, then I'll ask for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have the general agenda, and I, let's see if there's any changes desired by the Assistant County Manager or the Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move, I think it's 13 and 14, to new business, please. Make sure I, I'm trying to get back to my, I know that's what it is, 13 and 14.
I have no changes, Mr. Chairman.
And I ask for approval with moving items 13 and 14 to new business. Can I get a motion to do that?
I make a motion to approve with the changes. Second.
Have a motion, second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. So general agenda is approved with those changes. I would like to recognize Al Hackel here with Statesboro Herald, and I don't think anyone else has come in, so thank you for being here. It's my pleasure now to read 15 items on the consent agenda. There were 17, and we're moving two of them. So number one is approve the minutes from Monday, August 12th, 2024. Approve the minutes from Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. Approve the minutes from Friday, August 23rd, 2024. Motion to approve the reappointment of Walter Gibson to the Coastal Regional Commission of Council of Georgia. Motion to approve the reappointment of Benja Thompson to the Middle Coastal Unified Development Authority. Motion to approve the sole source purchase of an interactive Koala aquatic play structure replacement is splash in the borough from My Park Supply LLC in the amount of $682,113. Number seven, motion to approve the purchase of two 2024 Ford F-250 crew cab pickup trucks with eight-foot service bodies to include ladder racks from Allen Vigil Ford Lincoln Government Sales in the amount of $62,977 each, a total of $124,954. Eight, motion to approve the purchase of one 2024 Ford F-150 from Allen Vigil Ford Lincoln Government Sales in the amount of $40,318. Number nine, motion to approve an annual customer service agreement from Janitorial Supplies with UniFirst for a total of $10,677.60. Number 10, motion to approve a bid and enter to a contract with Sykes Brothers Incorporated for road repairs on various county roads in the amount of $215,022.50 to be funded by Tisplust. Eleven, motion to approve and ratify an emergency rock purchase on August 9th, 2024, from Vulcan Materials Company during Tropical Storm Debbie in the amount of $33,294.10. Twelve, motion to approve and ratify an emergency rock purchase on August 12th, 2024, from Vulcan Materials Company during Tropical Storm Debbie in the amount of $32,348.35. Skipping 13, skipping 14, putting in, under new business, going to item 15, motion to approve and ratify the use of JL Deriso Trucking for rock hauling services in the amount of $28,754.27. Sixteen, is motion to approve and ratify the use of JL Deriso Trucking for rock hauling services in the amount of $33,179.25 due to Tropical Storm Debbie. Number seventeen, motion to grant a 2024 alcoholic beverage license for packaged retail beer, wine, distilled spirits sales for Buzzway LLC located at 22963 U.S. Highway 80, Statesboro, Georgia. We have, proposing 15 items here under the consent agenda. We can, again, vote on these 15 collectively, or now that you've heard them read, if you would like to move any one of them to the consent agenda, we can certainly do that. Any discussion?
Motion to move to accept them collectively, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion to approve as stated, and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Now, under new business, we will take Now, under new business, we will take the items as in order, and we have the EMS Director, Brian Hendricks, is going to make the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Hendricks, Director of EMS. So it's no secret, the problems that we've had procuring and getting ambulances, we're still waiting on several. However, we are getting close to time, so I'm coming to you to request radios for those. We made the decision towards the end of last fiscal year to keep two ambulances, at least two ambulances, we might even keep three ambulances on reserve, just due to the fact of the difficulty in getting parts and the difficulty in getting ambulances, and also with the increase in staff and the increase in stations. So two of the radios will need to be purchased for two new ambulances if we keep two ambulances in reserve. And the other two mobile radios will be for our quick response units that were just ordered or that are currently ordered. And hopefully, we'll be here in the next several months. So that's what this sole source request from Motorola for these four mobile radios. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? No, that's for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor? Unanimous approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move to item 13 and
Mr. Chairman, these next two items, I would like to recuse myself from these next decisions, please, sir.
All right.
I'm wrong, I'm headed wrong.
Let me do one thing. This is my mistake because a change was made. I thought we need to address one other before we address this. No, it's not yours, it's mine. Airport manager, David Campbell, if you would come forward and present your item, please.
David Campbell, Airport Manager. The airport committee requests that we receive up to $4.00 million in funding from FAA and GDOT. It's going to be used for apron rehab, teehanger construction, site prep and paving at the airport. And our local match for that 4.4 will be up to $568,000 in order to get the 4.4 million.
Have any questions? And I'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Have a motion, we have a second. All of those in favor? Show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you. Now, we'll move to item 13 and 14. That was moved from the general agenda.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda into new business. I will read 13 again and then I think we have a discussion on it. This motion to approve and ratify hauling services by Sand Creek Land Construction LLC for Tropical Storm Debbie repairs in the amount of $23,976.92. Connor, I think you've got some.
Yes, if you would, I would like to recuse myself on the next two, please.
Okay.
13 and 14.
Should, mistaken, should he leave from here or just?
What's the reason for the recusal?
That's fine.
Okay. No, I think he can stay here. I mean, there's no reason why he needs to leave. That's fine.
All right. Everybody in agreement with that? Well, I tell you, if you're in agreement, show of hands, approval. Okay. Unanimous approval. So. All right. Mr. Butler, if you'll come forward.
Did you have specific questions, Commissioner?
No, Mr. Commissioner, do I need to make a motion to approve 13 and 14 now? Just he recused himself, but I think we still have to.
I think you approve them, approve them at one at the time, I think.
Okay.
Since you moved them.
All right, then I'll call for a motion on item number 13.
I make a motion to approve item number 13.
Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Item number 14. I will read it. Motion to approve and ratify hauling services by Sand Creek Land Construction LLC for Tropical Storm Debbie repairs in the amount of $16,226.75. Do we have any discussion on it? You know, we'll ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, second. Discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion, show of hands. Unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Next, under public comments, at this town, we're going to have the citizens come forward that signed up to speak. And you will have five minutes to, and we will have the clock, five minutes to say what you'd like to say. And we'll call you up.
Okay. Leisha Neville.
Before my five minutes start, can I do something? Y'all signs are next.
Thank you. Thanks.
You know, that was on purpose. We just wanted to see if you were here and you recognized it. Good.
Good evening. I have, I think, three things. First of all, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Dink for all the work, road work you've been doing. I know you're really catching it, but I promise, I've been trying to tell these people, y'all working as hard as you can and you have openings, and if they'd like to go apply, go ahead. And I know that you've got, you know, people that are trying to help you and, you know, that don't work but are trying to help anyway. But I appreciate it. My road for one, I don't have to meet the bus until it rains again. And then I'll have to meet them. But that's okay because I lived on that road my whole life, so I know how it is. So thank you for everything. The second thing is, I need to just, in general, remind you that it takes three to five years to build new schools. Just throwing that out there. We had a meeting today, and it takes three to five years to build new schools. So I'm just reminding y'all of that. But the main thing that I came for, other than thanking him, and Toby, please don't take offense to this because you've been really, I know I called you one time, but you have been really busy and had a lot on your plate. Down where I live, at 301 and I-16, I'm asking, I came to you to ask this, a neighbor has asked me, and so I'm seeing if you know or if I've forgotten. But I know that there was discussion of putting a red light at, like where the motel is that goes into aging. Did I say that right? Okay, there's a red light that was supposed to go there. And what some of the community was wondering, I don't know how often y'all go down that way, but when you go across the interstate, for some reason, it was built on a slope, not straight. And so you're kind of coming across a little hill. And now we have a lot of traffic coming off of I-16, a lot of big trucks. And then we have a lot of traffic for Georgia Southern coming, especially from the Macon Way. So anyway, it's kind of hazardous. There's a lot of wrecks there. And so they asked me, which I have no idea, so that's why I'm asking y'all, do you remember or do you know if there was a plan in there for red lights to go coming off the interstates onto 301?
Let's ask Iowa County Engineer that question. Brad, do you recall?
I know it's been discussed, and it is part of the long-range transportation plan that's in progress right now. That was one of the areas that we asked him to look at. But I guess keep in mind, it is the intersection of an interstate highway that's maintained by GDOT and a state highway that's maintained by GDOT, so they're really not, except for, I guess, Rocky Road.
Rocky Road.
And the entrance coming out of Oji, which I think has a name now. I guess that's the Ferguson Drive. That's the only park that's county maintained. I guess the park where your heavier traffic is, which would be the interstate ramps in 301, that's all state maintained. So, but we did ask, I know Jamie's somewhat familiar with the discussion we have with the consultant that's working on the long-range transportation plan to identify that. It was looked at in some of the traffic studies that were done for, I think it was Oji, if I'm getting the name right.
I can't, I don't know how to say it, so.
And, you know, we do think as a result of those traffic studies, at some point, if Aspen Aerogels comes online and all the other things get running, there will be a demand for traffic signals in that area, or at least for the I-16 ramps coming on the road. And then Rocky Road, we're not as sure about because Aspen, I guess, we don't really know what's going on with that project and the time of that. But it's probably more down the road as far as needing any improvements for that.
And actually, that one is not as, really is not as much of an issue, I don't think, because when they're coming off the interstate, they're either going across to turn or else they're going towards Statesboro. And, well, they usually don't slow down very much. They just kind of pull on out there. And so that's where the problem is because you're coming across that interstate and you, they can't, they can't really see sometimes very good, especially cars, you know, can't really see that coming across and then going. So that's where it's getting to be a problem. And I know that now when Georgia Southern was starting back, the state patrols went down and they patrolled and helped with the traffic down there then. Because, I mean, I know that was big. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you. I'll relay that back, but possibly or probably?
Yeah, I think, I think the county's role in this is going to be probably requesting GDOT to continue to study it. But that was part of what the long-range transportation plan was looking at as well. And I think they're going to include that in their report when it comes out in the next couple of months. I think we're expecting it within the next, before the end of the year, we should be getting the finished product on that. But I think the county's role is going to be more requesting this from GDOT since it's really not a county road that's necessarily, unless we do start having some issues with Rocky Road and the other one, but.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
We'll continue to, yes, communicate with GDOT to answer your question and try to make sure they're aware of the situation there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Leisha? I apologize. That got underneath the rug, I'm sorry. And that's the same thing Brad told me. We did have that discussion, me and Brad did.
I'm glad it happened after I called you, so.
Yeah, so if I ever mess up again and something gets pushed away, please don't pick up the phone and call me back. I'm getting answers, but sometimes other stuff gets in front of it and, you know, we got hurricanes and things like that going on. So thank you, ma'am, I'm sorry about that.
No, it's fine, really. I just didn't want you to think that I was being rude by asking it.
Marcus Tool.
Hi. First, Marcus Tool, State, 8 Crescent Avenue, Statesboro, Georgia. I'm not here to fuss at you, I'm just here to remind the community that when you try to force the county to interfere with a city annexation for housing, that what you're doing is causing both the county and the city to spend money on lawyers to do something that isn't going to accomplish anything or change any facts on the ground. All it is, is you're taking dollar bills and burning it. You might as well put it in a trash can. And we're not talking small dollar bills, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars in dollar bills. The other thing I want to say is while we're on the subject of taxes, once again, I'm not fussing at you guys. Lately, some of the folks who complain the most about taxes in our community just engaged in a, got a settlement from the Downtown Development Authority for about $80,000, plus whatever legal fees the Downtown Development Authority, though that was tax money generated from hotel and motel taxes, it was earmarked to promote commerce in downtown, which generates, which generates sales tax, which this county can use. And so, as I said, some of the people who complain the most about taxes just drained $80,000 for the coffers because they don't know how to behave at a tabling event. And so that's, I'll just put it there. Thank you.
Lawton, sack.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I've come before you again. This is one of the reasons I actually signed up this evening, to clarify some of the false statements made by Marcus Tool in a public event. First and foremost, the $80,000 settlement that was offered to us came from the insurance company. None of this money came from the taxpayers. That is untrue. Further, our participation in the First Friday events is one that is protected by the First Amendment. And every time that we start a county commission meeting, we start with a pledge of allegiance that talks about rights and liberty and justice for all, even those of us that choose to complain about whether county or the city or our government is doing. And I would hope that each and every one of you would hold that as a fundamental right for all citizens, to be able to express your voice. It is a First Amendment right that you use as commissioners as you come together, as you assemble together, as you speak to the public. And there are protections for that. We chose on February 28 to sit down with Andrew Lavoy and the Downtown Development Authority to work this out. We have several attorneys that told us that we had a right to be out there. The government had not created what is called a limited forum to, that would not allow us to participate there. We asked for it to sit down as Bullock County citizens, and that's the way it should be done. On February 29, we were served with a letter stating that we cannot participate in a government-funded event, which is highly illegal. You cannot do that. But to clarify, we asked to sit down. We did not ask for a legal settlement for that to happen. We asked for a meeting to happen, to talk, and we were shut down. At that point, we had to engage with an attorney to fight for our rights. But it shouldn't have to be that way. Governments should have never shut down our right to participate in that. And anytime that a government stands in the rights, it stands in the way of the rights of citizens, we as citizens have a right to stand back up against them. So we are labeled as complainers, but instead I tell you that we are citizens of this country. My granddad fought for this country in World War II. He came home with a Purple Heart. He dedicated his life to fighting for the rights. And he taught me two great things as a young man. First and most importantly, he read the Word of God to me every single night. And it's the same God that I serve. And the second is that the rights for all citizens are what is most important. And we're going to continue to use those rights, even through intimidation tactics, even when you get threatened, even when people get you kicked out of meeting locations, we're going to continue on because we have that right. And people call us troublemakers. We're not the ones causing the trouble. We didn't raise taxes, we didn't kick. not the ones causing the trouble. We didn't raise taxes. We didn't kick citizens out of First Friday. We didn't threaten a citizen and drag them in the court. We have done nothing but come before this board and the city council and expressed our views. Let's just be honest. Y'all didn't like the signs we made. You didn't like your name on the sign. But that was an action you did. And we as Americans have the right to express our views whether you like it or not. And telling people they need to sit down or stay home is just not right. So we're not going to be intimidated. If you want to make me angry, you mess with my God, or you mess with the rights of citizens. And I'll share with you what I shared with Ms. Liz Johnson just a few weeks ago. I will go to bat for anybody's right to speak, whether you're a Democrat or Republican or anywhere in between. But we have the same rights to stand up and speak, and we're going to continue to do that. We've got three officers in here tonight. I don't know why the county has three officers at a meeting. Just a year ago, we had no officers here. We've got to be able to come and participate in this government, government without intimidation. Thank you.
Bill Emly.
Before Mr. Bill Emly comes up, Mr. Lawton, could you come back up here for a minute?
Absolutely. Yes.
Now, you, you always talking about citizens' rights. What about the other citizens that me and Mr. Ray represent who come up here? And we represent a large part of the city, who asked us why they don't have First Friday no more? They ain't got no rights?
Oh, I can answer that. The Downtown Statesboro Development Authority voted not to have it. It had nothing to do with us. We didn't get a vote in there.
They got rights too. They want to come with their families downtown and do what they wanted to do.
Yes. And we had a tent and we sat there. And we conversed with people that, that came by. It is a patent law for those that are saying that we were out there harassing people and that we were out there causing trouble. None of that ever happened. So that answers your question.
One more question. Now, you call yourself a preacher.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Tim down there stood up there and said a prayer, and you sat down.
Yes, sir.
You're a Muslim. And what was, what was that all about?
Well, first of all, I have the right.
I ain't got the right to ask you what religion you is, but everybody else stood up.
Yeah. I will.
A preacher?
Sir.
But you're a preacher though, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, I mean, you, you always come and say you representing citizens. But the citizens that me and Mr. Mosley represent, they ain't never came up to me and said, said anything about what you talking about.
Well.
What they've been telling me and Mr. Mosley, what happened to First Friday? Why we can't bring our family, children, dogs, or whatever come up here, which has been something that's going on for, since 2009, and it's all of a sudden stopped because of a few people. Not everybody.
Yeah, those few people is the Downtown Development Authority.
Everybody has a right to do what they want to do. And you are right. But there's a lot more people who have rights to come downtown too.
And we never stopped them from participating.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
What you going to do with that money? You going to give it to the food bank?
Well, first of all.
It's taxpayers' money, even though it was paid for by the insurance company. It's still money that could be used for the citizen. Are you going to give that to the food bank? Or give it, help some family around here?
We're helping families every single day.
Wait, wait. They're not talking to you. I'm, I'm talking to him.
Well, first of all, to answer your question, I don't know if you realize it, but attorneys are not free.
Yeah.
That, unlike what Marcus Tool says, all the attorney fees have to be paid out of the settlement. What you may also not know is that full $80,000 settlement is also taxable. So we're going to have to pay taxes on that, which is approximately $32,000. You start doing the math and you see that there is not a lot of money there. So.
Well, I, I'm just asking, I ain't.
And I'm, and I'm answering your question.
I'm just asking what the citizens who I ran for and elected me to ask. That's all I'm asking. Thank you, sir. That's all I need.
I have one question. You, you get up here and preach. Do you have the right, I want a yes, yes or no answer. You have the right to break the rules. Just break rules, period.
There were no rules.
Okay, your, your party rules.
Okay.
Yes, yes or no, do you, do you have the right to break your rules of the, of the party?
I did not break, break any rules.
I'm just saying, yes, yes or no?
I'm not going to be intimidated by you.
That's fine. I just want to, I just want to, I just want a yes or no. I just want a yes or no answer in front of everybody.
He not talking to you. He talking to him.
And I'm trying to answer his question, but he's trying to pigeonhole me.
No, I'm not pigeonholed. I just, I just want a yes or no answer.
Then give me the opportunity to answer your question.
Yes or no? That's all I'm asking for.
I have not broken any rules.
Okay, that's fine. That's all I wanted to hear. That's all I wanted to hear. You haven't broken any rules.
I have not.
Okay. That's all I wanted to hear, in, in front of everybody.
And the state party chair backed me up on that.
Okay.
Chairman Josh McCune.
That's fine.
And I have an email from him as well. And I sent a copy to the entire county commission on that as well.
And I'm sure you paid an attorney for that as well.
That is uncalled for, Commissioner. I mean, we.
That's all, that's all my comment. Now, I just wanted a yes or no answer, and you wanted to pigeonhole it. So that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
I guess I might ask you one question, though. Have you ever been refused the opportunity to speak here?
At the county commission?
Yes, sir. When you would sign up?
No, sir. You've never refused me that opportunity.
Try to always treat people the same. Okay. That's, that's all I've got, you know. Well, anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Emly.
Good, good evening. Warm. Commissioner Chairman, Commissioners, County General and Assistant Manager Development Authority, Vice Chairman, and distinguished guests. My name is Bill Emly, and I'm a registered voter and property owner here in Bullock County. And when I went online and looked at the 2022-2023 organizational chart of Bullock County, it provides me the information that all of the departments, based on this, the Public Works, Recreation, Public Safety, Development, are all under the direction of the Assistant County Manager. When I look at the Assistant County Manager, she receives, or she receives the direction from the County Manager. County Manager and County Attorney receives their direction from the Board, Bullock County Board of Commissioners. And the Board of Commissioners received direction from the citizens of Bullock County. Now, that's what we have printed. That's what I'm, I'm looking at.
Mr. Emly, if I may make one correction, you're probably seeing the Assistant County Manager come out on the side. That's because, that's because me along with all of the department heads.
Nope. Assistant County Manager is directly below.
Okay.
Right above.
You're correct.
So that, by my understanding organizational charts.
We've updated the chart. You're just looking at a, a different one. That's fine.
When did you, when did you update it?
When we did the new budget, yeah.
When we do, well, I just printed this out yesterday.
Okay, go ahead.
So that's what I'm going by. So my question is, when over 300 people came in front of you of looking at the last budget, the budget, the 2023 budget, when we increased property taxes, a number of voting people, citizens of Bullock County came before their representatives and provided their displeasure, their financial hardships and like this for increasing taxes, our commissioners, the very next day, I think it was, after the three days of meetings, voted unanimously to pass the budget, the increase. So by doing that, were you listening and adhering to the wishes of your constituents that voted you into office? That's a serious question. We've had the EPD provide us with two meetings about this Floridian water, and there's been a lot of questions about this. Who's doing what, what, how much being pumped, who's going where and like this. I'm sorry, I've been out of town, but has the Bullock County Commissioners held a meeting providing information to its citizens? Good question. When I'm looking at a lot of the questions that I'm hearing and the feelings that I'm feeling is that there's a, it's almost like one of the movies that was played. What we have here is a lack of communication, and it's clear and understanding communication. And a lot of personal feelings are being hurt. I'm hearing a lot of people that are having financial hardship because, number one, their social security checks from the federal government did not increase as much as the county increased the property taxes at the same percentage rate. And again, this year, what they're proposing for this year's people on fixed income increase is not equal to. But yet, when we look at the salaries that some people are making in our county, they're extravagant salaries. And we wonder how come they can have a 3% pay raise and also parlay that 3% with 2% more so they get a 5% pay raise when the senior citizens only get a 2-point-some percent increase in their salary. So it comes down to dollars and cents. And when we start looking at budgets, are we buying or are we paying for projects that we really don't need? They are really not essential services. We just fund, we just approved how many thousands of dollars for splash in the burrow. But I'm always hearing at almost all the meetings, that splash in the burrow is a negative income drawing entity. So I wonder how come, how can we keep spending hundreds of thousands of dollars into a black hole? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
What's your solution? We close splash in the burrow down?
What's my solution?
Do you have a solution for that?
Let me ask you this question. If you hired me as your manager to manage your finances, and I'm doing a crappy job, what would you do?
That's, that's not the same question.
Yes, it is.
That's, that's not the same question.
All right, then yes.
The splash in the burrow.
Fire the people that are running the splash.
The splash in the burrow is for the citizens of Bullock County, and not only for the citizens of Bullock County. We don't have nothing for the citizens of Bullock County to do now.
Then manage the splash in the burrow in a positive direction, not a constant negative direction.
So tell me what you want us to do.
Look into hiring somebody or some entity to manage splash in the burrow in a positive direction.
I think, I think we're doing pretty good.
Well, I think you're doing, I, I don't want you managing my finances.
I mean, we got people out there taking pictures of teenagers trying to work.
And that's what the problem is. The problem is this, sir. You all can take money from my life savings because you have the authority to increase taxes beyond what senior citizens are getting from the federal government or from their life savings, their life savings. So every time you increase taxes.
So, so when, when you fall on the floor and you need 911 to come out there and pick you up.
That's an essential services which we should pay for.
I know it is, and it costs money.
We should pay for that because it's an essential service.
We, we ain't up here got a pot of gold back here and just throwing away money.
You don't?
No, we are not.
You don't. It looks like it.
We pay our people for a good job that they do.
Yes, and they are costing.
And you don't, listen, do you, do you want to work and not get paid? Do you want to work 10, 15 years and not get a raise?
I've been that, yes, sir, I have. When I was in the United States Navy, there were years, we never got a pay raise.
Well, I mean, I, I ain't working, I ain't working for nobody for that long and doing a good job and then getting a raise.
Well, I'm under contract of the United States Navy. I don't have a choice. My choice was made when I raised my right hand and said.
And you made that choice.
And I made that choice.
And I'm, I'm grateful for you doing it.
And my choice also is to come before you as your citizen and tell you you're spending money on projects that are not essential services. And that's what's costing the money, and that's what's taking it out of the general funds. When you.
I beg differ from you. And, and you're a citizen, and you have that right to come up here.
That's right.
And you have that right, and I have that right to differ from you.
But do you have the right that our 300 citizens come before you and express their financial hardships for three days, and you ignore them?
I, I have not seen 300 citizens.
Well, they go back and look at the record because there was over 300 people who changed in those meetings.
And, and you know, you've come up here also and, and said that you were representing the senior citizens of the.
Yes, sir, I am. I've got the proof.
The senior citizens that I represent don't even know your name.
I understand that. But challenge me on it. I can show you the documentation where I was, along with four other people, was voted as their representative.
Well, the ones I know don't know your name.
Well, then you don't know everybody.
Well, you don't either.
Yes. No, I don't know them, but I know the people, the 1,470 people that I represented that day and voted, and voted four of us in there.
Where was the meeting at?
It was at, I forgot the lady's name, down here at the park downtown, over by where the old ball for, ball fields used to be, and we put in a swimming pool.
Honeybone.
Honeybone Building.
Yeah, Honeybone Building. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
And I wasn't notified of it.
Mr. Emly, I just, I just want to say that I think that we have offered to sit with you multiple times, and I think even the county manager spent three hours with you explaining it, to which you seem to have understood at the time. But I'm extending another invitation for you to come speak to us, because we do have governmental accounting experts, believe it or not. We'll be happy to talk through some of this with you rather than just insinuating that we don't know what we're doing, because we do. I appreciate it.
I'm not insinuating what we're doing, but I'm not insinuating, but what we look at is when we're spending money on projects.
I understood. I heard you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That ends the public comments. Commissioners, staff, any comments?
Robert Siemens, Assistant Public Works Director. Commissioners, I'd just like to take just a few seconds to update y'all on roads in Bullock County. The status right now currently, I want to let you know, our men and ladies of Public Works have brought back to passable condition an additional 15 roads over the last two weeks. Currently, we are, we have seven dirt roads that are still partly closed. Of these, three of them, Denver Lanier DeKalb Road and Abu Anderson are going to be down for extended time period if we have to work to reset pipes. Got some major washouts on the other four. And then right now on paved roads, Brandon Pond, of course, we still know it's down, but it is in the contractor's hands. And Neville's Denmark, we did get confirmation from engineering and DOT that we do have some damages down there. And wanted to bring y'all to speed. That will have to be worked on through the engineering department and brought back up to standard and reset. So had any questions? But just wanted to give you an update on that.
About the bridge in Arco, does this feel close to?
As of a while ago, yes, sir. We are working with EMC there. They did do a boring to put the new power line through there under. under the creek this time instead of through the trees. And as soon as they tell us they're safely out of the way, we will get that reopened. We really expected it already.
That should be clear for tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay, thank you.
I want to make a couple of comments to y'all in all departments. Thank y'all for the job that you have done. And that's everybody, that's every employee that works for Bullock County. Through Debbie and through every other day that we come to work. Y'all do an outstanding job. You know, and in light of what we've heard tonight, I don't want you to leave with a negative thought in your mind. We appreciate it. And yes, we do have to pay you to do it. But y'all do it with pride. You do it with pride anyway. But thank you for what you do. If all of you, each department in here, if you'd spread the word, we appreciate the employees of Bullock County. Thank you.
We appreciate y'all and y'all's support, thank you.
Any other staff comments? Hearing none, Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do, would like to echo what's already been said about the roads. I know the road department was out on Sunday, Saturday coming up. And so, a lot of churches could have service. We still have a lot of rural churches, whatever, and I thought that was very commendable, making sure that people could get to church, especially after what we had been through. So, I just like to say, I know that they don't get appreciated, but from the bottom of my heart and a lot of other citizens, they were very surprised that roads were being done that weekend so they could get to church. But thank you again. Thank you for the job you do.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I will say this here. I probably don't say too much. But I got two more years. I ain't going to sit up here and listen to all this. I'm going to say what I got to say, and I ain't going to be fussed at. I mean, I know there are citizens out there. I mean, y'all can come up here and say what you want to, but I'm not going to be called all kind of this and that. I got two more years. You can build up your coalition and do whatever you want to. I done been here thirty years, going on thirty-one. And I done been running against everybody that ran against me. So, I will, when you come at me, I'm going to come back at you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And hearing nothing, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor? Unanimous, meeting is adjourned.